If you would please join us to replace me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if anybody has a phone, please turn it in silence so we don't have phones ringing in the meeting. And I will call the board. Our district attorney, Tony Harris, is here. Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Flamer, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Clarity. Our district manager, Chris Schumacher, is here. And with that, Chris, has anybody... Oh, no, we're doing the board workshop.
District manager is hiding in the audience.
Oh, that's... And Manny Nelson, I touch deck our district manager. He always hides out. And that brings us to our board workshop first, we're gonna start with that today. So I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
Okay. We had a few topics that we were gonna discuss today. And the first one, I was gonna just ask Mike to address briefly. And that was, we had the code enforcement violation, this thing, and we went out there and did some work in those areas. Mike, do you wanna talk about that for a second?
Respectfully, code enforcement, Mike Tischke, record for the force manager. Mrs. Lewis is going to come out and do her inspection of the area north of Gately Greens off of... In the road over there.
More than lakes.
More than lakes, correct. But everything was cleaned out. The pipes, they didn't find any blockages. So we expect this violation to be updated and we move on.
Thank you.
And the cost was under $10,000.
Mr. Mike, do we anticipate any additional violations coming out from self-servant management? For any other...
Well, this was from Lake County.
I'm sorry, from Lake County.
Not unless we get turned in by another resident.
Thank you.
Could we get an itemization of the cost we spent on that, so we have an idea of what the value of this work is that they did? Should we get a cost breakdown of their price proposal?
I meant that's ours. It was just under $10,000.
No, topic unit price. I'll get that. Okay, thank you.
And one more thing, or Chris, is there something that we should either put on our site or get something out? Because I mean, I know some of these things are in our planning process, and we are looking at them. We're, you know, trying to formulate sequencing and planning. I mean, the residents have every right to, you know, to report whatever they deem necessary. But I think if we can communicate what we're focused on, then we might be able to inform the resident that, hey, there is a plan. And I don't want this to be, you know, is the ability to kind of circumvent our process or put things in a higher priority than we have them based on what our priority plan is.
We took some pictures out there, and we'll put that on the website. But I also contacted a couple of residents that did that initial complaint. And I said, hey, they're gonna be out there. Why don't you walk out there when they're pulling these grates and see for yourself? And one of them wrote me a note back and said, yeah, they found one little root, and everything else was clear.
Okay.
Yep. And so, but perception's reality and...
Exactly. Yeah.
Along that sea line on the stormwater, over the weekend, we got that about an inch and a half of rain. And Gateway Boulevard, north of the Stony Brook... North, yeah. North of the Stony Brook deal. The road was totally underwater. Totally underwater. We got a catch basin or two out there that are plugged. Today, when I came back from, probably observed, water was standing on the road, and it hadn't even hardly rained at all. So there's gotta be an obstacle or silt eel or something that somebody left in one of those two inlets. Does the road still have water again?
I have a contractor beyond tomorrow morning to address that.
On that, on that one. Great.
And for the record, Stephen Blum from Severge, or not Severge, sorry, is here. Chris?
Yep.
And also just gonna bring up, just from the start of our upcoming assessment methodology study, we're moving the budget categories more into functional categories, five of them. As you see there, the stormwater management, parks and rec, roads, general administration, enterprise, utility. So when you see the new proposed budgets come out, they'll be under those categories. It's slightly different, but it really is just functional. And we're having a staff meeting tomorrow to go over our capital and our budgets. And at the next meeting, we'll be presenting those. And the draft budget will come to the board at the end of next month.
I don't know if this is for Chris or for Stephen, but as we look forward to budget, I'm not sure how we track the things today. But from a project perspective, whether it's Lake Bank or if there's, you know, other smaller projects, as we're, you know, looking at engineers or vendors, I think being able to track to the project level is important. Because if we're putting things like value engineering or, you know, call saves initiatives or just anything that's related to the project, anything that we could tie back financially to show where we had, you know, variance plus or minus and show benefit of that, I think is something that would be very beneficial. Because I think some of the decisions that we should be making from a staff perspective, from a vendor perspective, should tie back to those, you know, efficiency saves or productivity or cost avoidance or whatever. So I don't know if there's a way for us to do that or something we should maybe consider, you know, being able to tie project-related tasks to, either to a GL or, you know, something along those lines.
And that's one of the things we'll be doing with this, under those categories, is you'll see more line items. And what we're planning on doing too is, we go out and we do these projects, but we don't have a post-project wrap-up. Here's what your budget, here's what we actually spent. We'll do photographs and the same thing with the website for residents. You know, we just finished, like, one of those things we're working on third gate, and we go out and get those things done. But, you know, there's not a follow-up.
Along that line, what he's talking about, and I don't know, I've never heard this addressed here, but we're going to prepare a budget, and it's a budget, it's based on estimates, sometimes estimates, but it's a number. We then have an assessment that goes out based upon those estimates and a contemplated number of ERCs, okay? Per whatever the budget item is. Question, when we get to the end of the year, either a increase in ERCs, a dramatic increase in ERCs, which would be a revenue issue, and/or a dramatic increase in, let's say, professional services, vendor services, to any one of those categories, for whatever reason, upsets the apple cart. If we have each one of these and these stand independent, do we have a true-up at the end of the year to where, let's say, stormwater, we estimate that $2 million, and it comes in $1,800,000. Is that $200,000 put into a dedicated reserve for stormwater for the next year or immediately applied as a deed up to the rates for the next year? What do we do on that?
Basically, that is gonna be the secondary benefit of doing these five categories. Is now you're gonna report based on those categories. So that means your financials moving forward are gonna change a little bit to allow that. Now, in terms of surplus or deficit, that'll be up to, you know, to the board to decide how they wanna address that move forward. I mean, you know, if you're running pretty flat or you're a little bit behind, maybe you don't increase your assessments. But if you do realize, and it's probably gonna be, the most significant adjustments are probably gonna be after the first year of putting the methodology in place, you know, to kind of do a true-up. But yes, you can do true-ups. You can make adjustments. You can assign money to, you know, stormwater, to parks and recs.
Can you have dedicated reserves?
Yes, absolutely.
So right now, I hear what you're saying, but that scares me as to what we've been doing for the last 17 years. We've been blending everything, is what it sounds like.
Well, yeah, you have one general fund. You know, revenue comes in, expenses, expenditures go out. At the end of the day, you have a surplus or deficit, and it stays in the general fund. It's not like it's going anywhere, but it's not tracked per a functional basis. It's not tracked per function.
Well, this would then would force us to be accurate then on the budget of those individual items. Or otherwise, you're gonna be Robin Peter to pay Paul or having to have a special benefit.
Well, if you're going to split them out into these categories, then you wanna make sure that you're assessing accordingly. And that if you are off...
See, that's the problem. We don't assess by budget items. We assess by total. So one screw-up takes down the whole thing.
Or the other way around.
Or the other way around. Yeah, yeah, okay.
When you do this budgeting, you're gonna put priorities and status on certain things, so we all know what the priority is, rather than just sticking them in the budget?
Well, there's, I'm gonna bring that up in a minute. I haven't slightly revised the priority sheet. And before, we asked about ranking your priorities, which I've attached to an updated sheet. And working with Joe, we really wanna go from strongly disagree to strongly agree for all those statements. And then we'll compile them. And they set the board priorities, and then bring that to the budget meeting. So you can look at where the board is, and you know where you are initially, and also for the residents. Well, this is what I want done. Well, obviously, the board doesn't feel the same way, because most of them disagree it's a priority. But we're hoping that that priorities that we're setting and agreeing, like, say, we'll compile and bring it to the budget meeting. And the budget will reflect the board priorities.
Well, using your example, I was confused. Evidently, I was the one that did it the wrong way, or I didn't understand it. Under board, you got five items there. I think all of them are one.
Well, then you would rank strongly agree or...
On every one of them. So I don't have to go one, two, three, four, five.
We're not staggering.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I did it the wrong way.
So, and to Kathleen's point, we expect her call?
I think during the meeting, when I was in the workshop, you did the data.
It's David, yeah.
I'll send my tech to you now.
So to Kathleen's point, I think what I would like to see is, one, you're gonna put your approved items in your budget. But you should have a master document with your capital projects and maintenance. And with those projects, with prioritization, sequencing, so as we go through the prioritization, both for maintenance and for capital, based on our input, we can rank, this is our priority one, you know, priority two, or high, medium, low, however you wanna do it. And then we should be able to track that. So you and your staff will do a sequencing exercise. So we know there's certain projects that need to hit certain times of year based on, like, for lakes, based on, you know, rainfall or water levels. Other projects, maybe time of year, whatever. But we should be able to see what our yearly plan is, all prioritized and sequenced. And then we should be, you know, you should be able to come and report back on those items, you know, monthly or whatever. We're on track with this. We're gonna launch this. We're in the bidding process here. So we have a nice health check of all our priorities. We know if we're on budget, if we're on time. Because I would love to at some point to put incentives into our vendor contracts for...
Do what, please? I'm sorry.
Incentives, incentive-based items in some of our contracts to deliver on time, under budget. Even get kickers if you come in under or, you know, things like that. So just more transparency to the project. I think we're being really helpful.
We have projects.
I know. Yeah. I've heard that response as well.
We have projects, management software, that we can put all that on a calendar through the...
That'd be fantastic.
Put the budget item next to it.
Yeah. And from an accountability perspective, that would help you immensely for you to know where things are. Who's got, who's, you know, who's doing what. So have you looked at any software?
We have project. We just acquired it.
Oh, okay, project. Fantastic.
And also, it'd be a lot easier because that way, if anybody wants to know the status, instead of asking questions here at the board, they can just look at the project schedules. That way, if they have a problem, they can bring it up. We're looking at it and saying, we're fine.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
So that we're redoing these and turning them back in?
Yes.
Because the way I did it, sounds like I'm not changing anything.
No, the only thing you do is where you have a one, you have an SA for strongly agree. And that's why I attached your previous.
Okay. Got you.
Do you want us to put an SA instead of one?
Use one. And again, we'll compile that. That way, you can see it across the board, and you know where your priorities rank in relation to the total board priorities.
Is it important that every one of these has a number?
I think yes, sir, I mean, because we like to be able to establish those low priorities with the board and identify those.
And then there's some that could be two. And I noticed you've got a budget work schedule in here, and it looks really good.
We have a couple of dates we need to change around in it that, you know, coincide with board dates. But that's basically the schedule we'll be working on. It's real similar to one we used in the past few years.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Anything else that you wanna go over here?
No, just if there's any other topics the board members would like to bring up that aren't on the agenda. And to include the plan, when Mr. Banks talked about one of his project management schedules in the calendar for him, implementation. We can tie that in. We can tie the board priorities in.
I think there's a couple of things as it relates to the rates study being done. We had a telephone conversation this morning, and I think everybody was on the same wavelength of what we've got to do. But the issue comes...
Who's we? Who is it?
Chris.
Chuck Lewis.
Mike, me, Chuck, and...
Leslie was here too. Chuck Lewis and Leslie all set.
Yeah, and...
Daryl.
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 Anyway, the issue that we come up with is, where in our rules, what's the history and the background of '70, '20, '10? Because we're addressing that, and I can't find anything anywhere, rule or otherwise, that says, it's almost like it came from above.
It's probably revenue-driven.
I think there's discussions in older minutes, probably way back when I'm gonna...
I look way back when. I couldn't find anything. But I would think it would be something of a rule nature, but I couldn't find it. And then, you don't think it is, though?
I don't think it's a rule, but I think it is in some old discussions that I've...
And the other issue is, what needs to be done or what has to be done to address rule, is it Rule Six or Chapter Six, that describes internal connectivity?
The rule, the chapter that Mr. Tinkle was referring to is the budget philosophy rule with regards to whether or not to charge certain properties for the cost of operating, maintaining certain infrastructure facilities. And the connectivity issue comes into play. And that's the one where, primarily because public reserve is not connected to the main part of Gateway. That was, I think, from '05, 2005, 2006.
That'd be '05.
The board would need to adopt amendment to the rule. You have to go through the rule amendment process to modify that. If the board was so inclined.
I'm wondering how we get a session. I'm not trying to throw internal connectivity under the road. I understand why it was done and all that, but I don't think everybody understood the consequences. We have two properties here in Gateway that qualify for internal connectivity, and they have been billed full value for 17 years. And my deal is, if it's good for the goose, it's gotta be good for the gander. How are we going to address this? And those two are Worthington on the south. They have no internal connectivity with Gateway whatsoever. And Arborwood Base Three, no internal connectivity. And we've been billing them at the full-meal deal. So we need to have a discussion of how we're going to treat this going forward. Because you're looking at possibly six or 700 more ERCs that are not gonna be participating in the distribution of the assessment.
Once again, I think, I'm not sure if I would make such a blanket statement. I think we need to look at each property and see how that rule applies. I mean, I think that's board function during the assessment hearing process.
Well, it says in the rule, it says in the rule and all the lead-up, I've read all the minutes of the meetings from 2004 made, all the way through where it was accepted. And it uses the basis, connect, directly connected to Gateway Boulevard. Directly connected to Gateway Boulevard. And those others are not directly connected to Gateway Boulevard. I think, and the other thing is, I think that probably, again, I'm not against it. I just think we need a clarification, because we have other places that are not directly connected to Gateway Boulevard for those that are on Griffin Drive or on Westland. So I think it's, we need to look at that and have a discussion, because it's a touching issue.
Anything else? Anybody have something for Chris?
Oh, there is one thing that came up and left a copy out front for public distribution. And also, I put a copy, and it has to do with this proposed apartments on Gateway and Griffin. And they have made a permit application to the Corps of Engineers to fill the wetlands on that property. And also, fill a drainage swale that comes down the side of that property.
Is that drainage swale deeded to us?
I have not looked into it. I just received this yesterday. So I haven't looked into it that closely, but it probably has something to do with drainage system.
Yeah, if it's dedicated to us, I would think that they somehow have to come through here before they can go to Jacksonville and get our approval.
If the district has a drainage management, they proposed impact, that they would need our approval for that.
Don't they need something from South Florida Water Management?
They would need that also. And they're supposed to come to the district before, this district, before they apply to South Florida. So I don't, I mean, supposed to, that's...
Supposed to, yeah.
And I don't know if they've yet applied to South Florida. I can try to check that real quick.
Well, my point was, is when we get into the regular meeting and have discussion, should we have some type of a motion stating our position and have the district manager send Jacksonville a notice that, hey, the eyes haven't all been dotted and Ts crossed down here as far as them making this application?
So they haven't changed what they plan on putting there at all?
No, but what they did is they played a little trick over at the church. They put up a map on the wall that shows 310 units. What they didn't show and superimpose on the map is 1.75 acres of wetland. That two of their buildings are underwater.
Well, that's good. They ought to be able to sell their...
Lakefront property. So they take, there's no way in the world they can get 310 units with that 1.75 acres of wetland in there. This won't happen. But I think we need to take a position later on in the meeting to put Jacksonville on those that don't just jump out there and approve this thing, because it's not that simple.
They also wanna fill in part of the pond that's there too. And then there are also a page where it does say a request for a public hearing. And any person may request a public hearing, but you have to do it in writing. And the other thing that's in, thing is, the impact on natural resources, is that one I want?
Kathleen, where did you get filling in a pond? I thought it was only the wetland or the drainage ditch. I didn't see the pond being impacted.
Right over here, in this little area, is part of the pond. And... Okay, on page two, the compensatory mitigation, they have no mitigation has been proposed either there. So, I mean, those are our concerns, really concerns for us.
We brought up something similar to this about nine, 10 years ago at the country club in trying to convert a weapon to the lake for the golf course. And the hoops that we were presented with to jump through to make it happen, not counting the mitigation-related stuff, we didn't have a big enough checkbook. So I don't know, I don't know what all we're gonna do. But I'm sure that there's going to be penalties that come back in order to make this happen.
Well, what I find injury is, they had a public hearing. I think it was pretty one-sided as to how the community felt about it. And they haven't changed their plans, that I can tell, at all, not even a little bit.
Yeah, keep in mind, that's 300 people out of 10,000. I don't consider that being a public overwhelming deal.
Well...
And it wasn't really a public hearing. It was a pre-hearing, because they didn't have to do it.
That's true. They didn't, they didn't really publicize it.
But the thing is, right now, is to me, for them to make, they can't be, go to the county under South Florida with a plan or the footprint that we all saw. And that they reduced it going into that meeting from 336 to 310. They can't even do that without getting this approved first. So it's chicken or the egg. Which one of these things that they have to go through first to go to the next step? They haven't got to the point of filing anything with the county in the way of an amendment. So again, I think we have to do something to let Jacksonville know that we have our concerns.
Okay. Do they have a name for the project yet that they're...
Boardwalk.
It's called, it's plain Boardwalk?
It's what they presented at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. There is a project name on here. Mr. Guy just pulled it out to me. Says KO...
Oh, Kyo Pilon, right. Okay.
Well, they said that they were modeling it after Miami, so I guess they picked up a Miami name or something.
Wow. Not Miami, but...
Anything else, Mr. Schumacher?
That's all we have from the staff. And I guess the board side's over. Ready to move into regular agenda.
Okay, I will do that. If anybody wants to address the board, there are sign-up sheets in the back. And you will hand them to the gentleman in the blue shirt and the red tie. And has anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, at the moment, we have two. Jim Brand would like to talk about the Corps of Engineer permit.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Jim Brand. I'm a resident of Hampton Park and HOA resident board director. I wanna address the public notice permit request, permit application that you all were just discussing. I have prepared a letter requesting a public hearing. The notice indicates that the information provided is just based on what the applicant provided them. They've not done any analysis. They've not reached out to anyone else. The information provided is still for a multifamily unit, development at Griffin and Gateway. Seven buildings, 310 units. Exhibits attached, which you all were just discussing, show that Wetlands and the ditch, calls it a ditch, is to be filled in. The ditch is a canal, I believe, was used for drainage in Gateway. Lee County zoning, and I contacted Lee County zoning via email, and they responded that they have not approved any development. And the current availability is for no more than 200 units, not 300, in 10. South Florida Water Management District, I engaged a Melissa, and she indicated that they have not issued an environmental resource permit. So I've provided their responses as attachments to my request for a public hearing. I've also indicated that the ditch is a canal used by Gateway for drainage. And then I've also attached the information about the hearing that the developer held. To call it a hearing is a stretch.
I guess it wasn't technical.
It was their meeting to tell us what they wanted to do. I attached, included in my discussion, that information, and that it was overwhelmingly opposed by the community. Also, combined with Lincoln and Gateway Sun. I would like to hear you all pass a motion and have you articulate why you would oppose this permit by Corps of Engineers, so I can include that in my request for public hearing. Thank you very much for your time.
In that, in terms of part of that, apparently, in the past, there was a prior application to South Florida Water Management District for the same site. It looks like it was a combination residential and commercial. And the '06 application, it wasn't drawn. And so that has a number of plans on there as to what was planned, contemplated back then in South Florida. So it might not be a current one, but it's an older one, which may give them an indication, though, of what they plan on doing.
Next, Ron Worley, Hampton Park, on agenda, Ida.
Hi, I'm Ron Worley, Hampton Park. And I am very happy to address you today because of the outpouring of thanks and appreciation of Hampton Park owners for the vote that took place two weeks ago. Thank you for accepting this. And we wanna pass that on to you guys. It's also very meaningful to me that your vote was unanimous. Also, I wanna reiterate our commitment to help you guys with anything that you need with regarding that system going forward.
Thank you. You want to ask any question?
I was just gonna say, it is so delightful to get some appreciation for the vote.
Marty, I do have a question on that that Ron raises that was kind of left at limbo when the approval was made at the last meeting. That was the issue of the easements and what we need to do. I think we need to have a clarification. We've got roughly, how many did we say, Ron?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-six homes.
Thirty-six homes that have drainage facilities that we have now accepted that are on landscape buffer easements and not in drainage easements. What do we need to do to be able to go out there? Because one of the things we would like to do is to go out there and video those sewers, that we don't have an easement on which to go to be doing drainage work. What do we need? What, what do we need in the way of a legal document, Tony, to facilitate this?
I'll be looking at it and report back to the board in the next two weeks. Thank you.
And then the, what was another part of that? There was another part. What was the other part?
Only thing I remember.
Oh, I know what it was. I know what it was. Not only the easement, the issue of getting mortgagee compliance of the property owner that, in other words, if you have a mortgage, do you have to have their consent on granting that easement to the C D D? To me, I would think all thirty-six property owners would be very happy to grant it because it takes it out of their own backyard for operation maintenance and puts it on with us. I can't picture that being a problem, but it is a, something that you gotta go through. But we need to find out if that's, if that's true.
Commander, just as a follow-up, I think what might be helpful when we get to the board meeting and the action to be taken on that, on core applications, to look at the application and what they proposed because back in the old South Florida permit, there was an indication of a portion of existing easement to be vacated was part of that process back then. It may still be current, which again gives the district another seat of debate or argue what.
What, what kind of easement? Drainage easement?
Well, there's a conservation, I'm not, not sure. Not sure.
Does that, the first thing, because I didn't want to argue with Kathy, but I, I looked at it on the map and it's kind of difficult to tell, but it does not look like to me they entered into the ponds. They only look like they touched the wetland.
There's the.
Did they go into the pond?
I, I don't know.
What is that pond, one, one ninety-three? Danny, Pinewood Lakes ninety-three or ninety-seven?
Sure.
One of those. It just didn't look like, but anyway, the pond.
If that's what they want to do now.
See, the pond is over here.
Yeah, but it's part of the conservation area, so.
Okay. Well, we need to get.
Anyone else that want to speak?
We have two more. Francis Anucci from Daniels Preserve would like to talk about the status of Commerce Lakes Boulevard.
Yes, thanks. My name is Francis Anucci. I live in Daniels Preserve. I'm just wondering, I know there is Commerce Lakes Boulevard is the road that goes right by the entrance to Daniels Preserve that connects Daniels to Gateway. I'm wondering, I know the district was supposed to take over that road. I don't know who owns it. Right now, my HOA is paying for the upkeep of the side of the road that upsets the lake because otherwise the ground looks terrible. And I understand the commercial group is paying to keep the streetlights on. So I'm just wondering, are there plans for someone, some public utility or public group to take over the care and, and ownership of that road?
Margaret, that's, I think there's a little bit of confusion. Commerce Lakes Drive from Gateway Boulevard over to, what is that, Kidsville, Lots of Love?
Love a Child.
I'm sorry?
Love a Child.
Love a Child.
Love a Child. To the east side of Love a Child, that road is being transferred from WCI to the C D D. That was one of the six or seven roads that we were going to take. From there on over to Daniels Parkway, that road is under a property owners association that no longer exists. It's defunct. It's in, I've been complaining about this for years. We got three or four of those here in this community where the developers, they let them go defunct and we now got a problem. Who's paying for it? As I understand it, I've had people calling me up and they're saying that they're getting tired of paying for streetlights, mowing grass and all that. But there's nothing we can do about it. There's nothing we can do about it. It would be nice if the property owners association would reform, reorganize.
In the event that.
But they don't want to.
Someone, someone has to take care of it. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a bigger problem than just grass and lights.
I know it.
And we're all paying taxes.
We got the same thing in West Links Business Park. We got the same thing in Fairway Links Office Park. We had the same thing in Town Lakes Office Park.
What would be the next step?
Well, Town Lakes Office Park, what this board did, got seven, eight, nine years ago, was cut a deal with them to include the road in the landscaping. And we maintain it, but we bill them a set, a special assessment. We could do that in the other deals. Now, I think there's gonna be some people screaming like a pig under a gate when we do it, but who's gonna pay for it? Somebody's gotta pay for it. I know as a resident of another area that has an HOA and pays an HOA dues for those assets and those amenities, I don't want to. I don't think anybody else wants to pay a separate one. The people that live in those areas should be paying for it. But to get those POAs back in, I don't know what you do. You guys got a, a bad situation in that your ingress address is controlled by somebody that's defunct. You're about the only one that falls in that category. All the rest of them, the ones that get hurt, live within the area that was deleted. Yours is a different deal. You're the only one that has to use that road and nobody to go to.
Since Skywalker opened up, it's a great shortcut from Daniels to Gateway without having to go to the lake. So the traffic is, is much harder. Eventually, the road's gonna need repairs and there's gonna be some liability issues. And I'm just wondering if nobody owns it, why happens? You know, it's even more than.
Ask that question.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's more than just paying to keep it up. You know, we can do that, but I, I think at some point.
Well, Bill, you and Margaret have been around long enough to know. What was the deal that we struck, this board struck with, I think it was Ben Sardo on Town Lakes Office Park that this board elected to take over that, but free because we charged him? What was the, what was the arrangement that was done there that would not keep us from being able to do that with each of the others?
Well, there was a viable entity that was willing to enter into an agreement. The Town Lakes Office Park, the people that, you know, own those properties were willing to enter into the agreement. In these, in the case of, we don't know, there isn't anybody to go to and say, we can do.
All the businesses that, our impact is all we can go to. I don't, I don't, I don't know. Tony, what's, what's our?
I, I can look, I, I can work my memos on that. We did all the memos about various types of ways to go to court, get a trustee. People wanted to convey it. I mean, I think, again, I'll resurrect the memos at the board meeting. I won't do new memo, but because the state of the law has not changed to my knowledge. That was what I did for Town Lakes and Fairway.
Yeah, well, we got Worthington.
But I think the same, if the similar situation exists.
It's the same thing. But the people at Daniels are impacted in the one.
Yeah.
Unlike all the other ones, the people that.
Right inside, yeah.
They're inside. This is a problem. And it's not fair.
And well, I mean, the, the businesses are impacted. The brewery and they're the ones that pay to keep the streetlights on. We pay to keep the road clean, so. All right, so I guess.
See what we can do.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
The last speaker of the day, Mr. Bob Gepper, wants to talk about downspouts in the town of Castilla.
Bob Gepper, Pelican Reserve. I'll have him go through and talk about what we refer to as the downspout initiative. And as it relates to the Prado and Castilla community, we've reached a couple of agreements with Lennar. The most recent of which was they're gonna charge us four hundred and fifty bucks a home, which is fine. That's a competitive rate to do that. My issue and why I bring it up to use today is I cannot get the first home done. They're building, you know, fifty, hundreds of homes out there. They haven't done one. I see that Phil's here today, or David Caldwell. And I would love for someone, I send messages constantly, and I'm sure that I go to spam because there's never response. You know, I'm like a toothache and I realize that. But I would like to get this done and I'd like to get the board to somehow get a commitment out of them. Our district manager has contacted them, you know, what's the next steps? How can we get these people to do what they say they're gonna do? Thank you.
Now, Bob, is that work supposed to be done as the, as construction is upon completion of the?
As they build the homes. We thought we had it covered in the permit criteria man. And I'm reiterating this, but that's quite all right. When it came time to interpret the manual to the homes, Lennar chose to interpret the manual differently than we did. So we basically said in a, in a way to try and accommodate and get the work done, okay, just do it. We'll pay it for it. You know, initially, we thought they would have to pay. We're, we're beyond that. Just do it. And, you know, anyway.
Chris, Bob indicated that you, you've had contact. What, what are they telling you?
Well, last time, and, and we've shared this correspondence, they got touch with Home Building and agreed to the four hundred and fifty dollar charge and I sent them a purchase order.
And that was a couple of months ago, I'm sure. I mean, this is, this has been going on since seventeen and it's ridiculous.
Who's the point of contact?
Well, Rhonda was and then she turned it over to Home Building and I have the gentleman.
Turner, Jack Turner. And I can't get him to answer. He won't answer phones. He won't answer emails.
Who's, who's his superior? I beg your pardon. Who's his superior? I have no idea.
Mr. Caldwell, who does Jack Turner report to?
Darren.
Whoever Darren is.
Darren. So is it possible to request, while David's in the room? David, is this something you could follow up with for us, please?
Well, actually, there was a conversation this week with Darren and the parties, not me, but the parties who were involved in executing this work. And he wanted it done and completed, so I'm surprised you actually haven't heard.
Not a word, okay.
But. You should have already last board meeting when we had levers.
So Darren's willing to get it done.
I hope he has the strikes to make that happen. Thank you.
He does. He's got a lot of strikes.
He does.
He should.
Okay.
Is this my, my.
Yeah. That might be a new point person.
You know, by the way.
However, before I'll send them a follow-up email. And that's called a public comment.
That moves us to District Engineer, Castilla Road and Drainage Turnover. There's that name again, Castilla.
Yeah. Good afternoon. For the record, Danny Nelson, Tech Tech District Engineer. This item is for the drainage and roadways. We had previously brought before the board the utilities which were accepted. The roadway and drainage, however, were not in a position to be accepted. They had issues. We started with inspections in seventeen, did a punch list. That went through a couple of iterations. We also went through iterations of review of their record drawings and documents and that went through a couple of iterations. So we're satisfied with all of that and this move is simply asking for approval.
How do we address, the, the road's not complete. It's got the final lift. Do we accept the road without the final lift? Or do we accept it conditional upon receiving the final lift? Because that road's not received the final lift.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the, how the final lift fits into play on this one because it would have to be, obviously that has to be done. So, I mean, that can be a motion that that's.
I was always of the understanding that we didn't accept the roads until the final lift was done.
Well, in the past, this, you know, these off of Cypress are different because in the past you had, the roads are part of the bond. So you can accept the drainage and not the roads until the final lift is done. That could certainly be a motion or there could be that the bond or that there would be a bond to cover the cost of the final lift. But I think it'd be appropriate, it would be fine to accept the drainage only.
Yeah, because I was out there just this weekend. There's, there's some advantage to the road.
I think Mr. Caldwell might have something to say.
He does. He wants to speak. Go ahead, David. Come on up.
There, the district, in accordance with your policy permit criteria man, there's a performance bond that covers the road a hundred percent, including the final lift. So that bond's left in place until that's, you know, the dollars are left there until it is completed.
So the time starts after it's.
Sure, fine. But you did that with Prado, Casella, a whole bunch of other subdivisions that the final lift's not there yet.
Okay. There you go. I make the motion then to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All we have.
Go ahead.
Can I have a question for Mr. Nelson?
Go right ahead.
I want to thank you very much for giving me Rick's name. He was very helpful. He answered all my questions. And I had lots of them and he was very patient with me. So I, I want to thank you for that. He also gave me some information and I don't know how it applies, that we could apply for FEMA grams for the ponds for seventy-five percent to be covered. I, he mentioned it to me, so.
I'll follow up with him, but I know that, and this, this would go general, I believe that there is a program called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And it's administered through FEMA and at the local level in Florida. And when there's a natural disaster, funds are, are assigned to that. And if you're a county where that was directly impacted, which Lee County was, then you actually qualify for submitting. So certainly, now, they have certain criteria that it can't be for new infrastructure. It can be for existing. There's several other items. So, you know, you could certainly submit for lake bank improvements, you know, for the next, for the next phase, the next round. And I believe that the deadline for submitting is August. So that could certainly be done. I don't know that you would qualify. I don't think you wouldn't, but I know there are certain stipulations that you've got to meet to, to qualify. But we sit in Lee County and I heard that the dollar amount for the county was over twenty million. When I've worked with HDH G M P Hazard, H M G P, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the past, I don't recall extra dollars being assigned to a county and just assigned to areas that were impacted. So we can certainly look into that and, and go after funds definitely.
Can the facility plan be used as the basis of the request?
Well, in this case, we actually have those, you know, those lakes that were designed and have not been completed yet. We can't use it, obviously, for the work that's finishing up now.
You're talking about the other eight?
Yes, sure.
And then six?
And what about, so if I'm thinking post, post-disaster impact mitigation, would, would that also serve as like flowways, you know, to, to clean flowways that may have gotten caught debris or damage as a result of?
I'll, I'll bring the criteria back before the board. I don't know if, if cleaning or maintenance, I don't, there may be different funds for that, but it's meant for capital projects.
Oh, it's a capital fund?
Yeah, generally you have to, I think, show how that's benefiting as a result of, of the storm. So, but like I said, I'll, I'll read the different categories and I'll bring that back in a minute. But thank you for bringing that. And I will definitely mention that to, to Rick as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Margaret, is this our time for Danny's questions?
Yep, go ahead.
Got a couple. We'd asked a couple of months ago about a proposal on that adjustable weir at Hampton Park. Can we get that in so that we can? Maybe if we turn in all these permits, they'll be nice again to us and they'll consider putting in the adjustable weir at Hampton Park. And then the second thing is, today at the meeting again with the Ray consultant, we came up with the fact that we want to produce a ten-year capital improvement, capital improvement plan toward build out of Gateway and what is needed. I'd sent you an email identifying water sewer and irrigation facilities that I saw that were, were vulnerable. You're doing a report right now that is basically a hydraulic analysis, I guess. Will that hydraulic analysis identify what facilities we need for build out along with the estimated cost that we could apply or have additional authorization to you to perform that work? We need it badly.
Yeah, so partly in, in, we're scheduled in June to be, to, to bring something back on, on that. Now, that's just covering irrigation and, and the wastewater. And it's only covering the irrigation on the, on the infrastructure side. So I know that Kenny had mentioned, I think in the last meeting, there are issues you're having with deficit and you've got storage.
Wells.
We're not looking at supply. This is only looking at the infrastructure and is it able to provide the pressure and what issues after the.
That's, that's what I want to point out. We need the other to be able to determine what kind of volume we need. We need another well in Hawthorne. Do we need, my, my calculation was we need a thousand gallons a minute. Is that correct? And if so, we're looking big bucks. Same thing with the storage. Do we need additional storage?
Yeah, so you're.
Those aren't included. I think we need from you a proposal back to do those things so as to be able to produce a ten-year capital improvement plan for the Ray consultant. He said he desperately needs that to do the rate study.
And on the potable water side, we're not, we're not doing anything with the potable. And I don't know that you have any issues.
I'm not aware that we have any vulnerability on potable water. Sewer, we have, does your analysis, will it tell us that we need a new force vein from roughly hidden links all the way to the wastewater treatment plant?
It'll tell you where you have deficiencies and what solutions you have, yeah. So that, that will be able to.
So then what we need then is to have you identify where we aren't getting the information we need, i.e. the wells. And that, so that you can add that to the findings.
If that's the pleasure of the board, certainly.
Do we need to make a motion for him to come out with a proposal for that?
I'd make the, I'd make the motion because unless we just want to pull it out of our backsides, we gotta have a number. And right now, we are running, as Kenny indicated the last meeting, we're at basically a hundred percent on our irrigation and we got fifteen hundred more homes coming in.
Wouldn't it make sense to include that in, in the existing work you're doing now?
I mean, unless, unless that's something the staff can, can handle, that certainly is. something.